And welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is Wednesday, October 30th, 2024. It is now 6:00 PM. The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing enter ID 84130653465 hashtag. Comments will also be accepted via email at or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, Madera, California, 93637. This meeting is hereby called to order at 6:00 PM. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia, absent, and Councilmember Villegas.
Here.
Thank you for that, Alicia. Would you all please rise for the invocation led tonight by Jim Garrison of United Methodist Church?
Let us pray. Lord our God, we give you thanks for all the blessings that you pour out so abundantly upon us. And Lord, we give you thanks for those that you have called into leadership positions, for those members of the council that have have been selected by the people to serve and for their willingness to serve and for all the work that they do. Lord, on things that sometimes seem exciting and controversial, a lot of times seem mundane and tedious. Lord, we thank you that it's all important and it all affects how we live. It all affects how we're safe. Lord, we ask for each of our leaders to be blessed with wisdom beyond human wisdom. Or during this time leading up to the election, Lord, we ask for particularly you to give your peace. Lord, and that however elections turn out, that each person would find contentment and continue to serve you in whatever opportunities are set before them.
It's fine.
And we ask for your blessing on the meeting tonight, that the decisions that be made would be ones that would lead to good things for our community. And that, Lord, we ask for blessings for Madera. We ask for blessings for our nation as we go into the elections and that you would draw us together. Or that you would help us to trust in our institutions and exercise accountability and that you would cause us to love one another and to be civil with one another. We just pray these things in your name and ask for blessings on this meeting now, in Jesus' name.
In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Please remain standing. Will you place your hand over your heart? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic which stands one nation on the top.
Thank you for that. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I will ask my colleagues, are there any changes or questions about the agenda? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All second.
Motion by Councilmember Villegas, second by Councilwoman Evans to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a member absent.
We don't need a roll call.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you. I did, by the way, Councilmember, I did hear Councilwoman Evans from that second.
Oh, that's me.
Okay, just to make sure. Okay, we move on to presentations. There are none. We will now move on to public comment. The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak under public comment?
How you doing, Mayor Garcia? City of Madera, citizens? My name is Maurice Johnson, and I am a resident of Madera for the past two and a half years, a little over two and a half years. I am no stranger. I used to go to elementary school here, so I'm no stranger to Madera. What I want to bring up is to the city council is I attended an airport advisory commission, the latest one this month, and none of the commissioners, all but one, attended. So there's a concern. It is my understanding that there has not been a quorum for quite some time under this commission. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, that, you know, someone be aware of it and try to bring in individuals that are motivated to support this commission so that things at the airport. I have a private pilot's license, so I have a vested interest in seeing what goes on at the airport. And I am actually also interested in possibly becoming one of the members of the commission at some point in time. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention and hopefully you can help this commission be effective.
Thank you. Would you mind leaving your contact information with our city clerk, Alicia, here? In that way, we can have someone respond or contact you. Are any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. My name is Minerva Mendoza. I live in District Two. I also work for the American Friends Service Committee, Pan Valley Institute, nonprofit organization that has been working here in the valley for over 25 years. This evening, I'm here to invite you to the Day of the Death, Dia de los Muertos celebration, taking place at the Courthouse Park on Friday, starting at noon all the way to 8:30. There will be traditional Oaxacan food sold by indigenous women. And we'll have an altar, a community altar, and we'll also have music and coffee. The food is for purchase, but the coffee and pan will be a courtesy on behalf of the Pan Valley Institute. So again, I was just here to, one more time, invite you to our event. I did send you all an email with more details, so feel free to reach back if you have any questions. Thank you.
Good. Are the others members of the public wishing to speak under public comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am 12-year-old Kate Denise, and I'm here tonight representing the youth of Madera and Madera homeschool kids. I am also grateful for all the parks in Madera, but it gets hot in the summer, and the youth in Madera could really use a splash pad. My suggestion is at Lion Town and Country Park because there's a lot of room there. This would help keep kids cool in the summer and give them something free to do. I can't wait to play at the Madera Splash Pad one day with my family and friends. This is a drawing by my seven-year-old sister, Drew. The future splash pad, and also, can we can we get the water fountain working in Madera Lion's Park? And extend the Madera Public Swimming Pool's hours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could you speak, come and speak with our Parks Director and then let him know the location of that of that drinking fountain? Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none? We will close public comment. Do we have any written communications, Alicia, by any chance?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close public comment. And go on to Item A, Public Hearing. Item A1 is a public hearing related to annexation of certain properties into Zone of Benefit One and Zone of Benefit 51 to the City of Madera Landscape Maintenance District, LMD, Zone for Fiscal Year 2024-2025.
Good evening, Mayor. I have that item.
Thank you.
Let me share my screen with you. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Nicole Say with the Engineering Department. Tonight, we are here for the second of two meetings for the landscape and line district annexation for fiscal year 2526. You'll recall, it's probably been about two months since the first meeting. Due to public noticing requirements, there is a bit of a gap between the two meetings. So tonight is the second meeting where we have public comment. Just a refresher, the purpose of this meeting is pursuant to Section 22554 of the Landscape and Lighting Act. Annexation of any parcel into a zone of benefit requires both a public hearing as well as a published notice of this public hearing. A public notice was posted in the August 28 edition of the Tribune, and this public meeting is a chance for current property owners in each zone of benefit to comment on the proposed annexation. The reason for the annexation is new development within the city is subject to annexation into an existing landscape maintenance district zone benefit. Assessments are levied to pay for each property's fair share of landscape maintenance within the zone associated with their parcel, and these properties will be assessed fees that are outlined in the next slide and included in the annual engineers' report. See, here we have in Zones One, we have full file suspension, specialty crop, being assessed $325 and $50, respectively. So fit to win, we have In-N-Out being assessed $90.42. California Custom Processing is one business, but they have two parcels, so they are assessed $188.44 and $96.35, respectively. We also have Almond World Phase One and Two. They are being, Phase One is being assessed $928.61 with Phase Two being assessed $917.31. Fast Track Car Wash being assessed $72.42 and Fresno Madera Farm Credit being assessed $76.23. Next, you will see the annexation maps for each parcel. This shows full file suspension here on the corner of Sunset and Aviation. Specialty Crop located on Condor Drive, just north of Kennedy Streets. In-N-Out located on Cleveland Avenue, Baton Fairgrounds. California Custom Processing shown here, also on Aviation and Condor. Almond World Phase One being shown here off of Condor and Phase Two being shown at the back end of that same strip. Fast Track Car Wash is here on Clark Street and Country Club Drive and Fresno Madera Farm Credit on Golden State, just north of Avenue 17. The recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and receive any public comments and then adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessments as set forth in the staff reports. Levying the assessment set forth in the staff report, this occurs as part of the next annual report, except covenants for landscape maintenance district Zones of Benefit One and 51, unauthorized city clerk to file the diagram and assessments with the auditor of Madera County. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Thank you very much, Nicole. We will now acknowledge Alicia, that Councilwoman Mejia is here. Thank you very much for that presentation. I will now open the public hearing on this item. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom communications?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll close public comment and I'll bring it back for discussion from my colleagues. Seeing none? We'll accept the motion.
Motion to approve that is written?
Second. Motion to approve Item A1 as written by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Villegas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Short and sweet. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess everybody wants to go to National Night Out tonight, which is not a bad thing. Item B is a consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from consent calendar, and it will be considered separately. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on the consent calendar? Alicia, do we have any Zoom or written communications?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now close public comment, and I'll bring it back to my colleagues for questions, comments, and/or a motion.
Want to approve consent calendar as presented?
Second.
Motion to approve the consent calendar by Councilmember Montes, second by Mayor Protem Gallegos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item C, Workshops. There are no workshops tonight. We will now move on to Item D, Petitions, Bids, Resolutions, Ordinances, and Agreements. Item D1 is a contract award for the 2024 Water Meter Project, City Project W32, Phase One. Mr. Bettencourt, do you have this item?
I do. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Madera City Council. My name is Steve Bettencourt. I'm a civil engineer in the engineering department. Let me share my screen. You can see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm here for the contract award for the 2024 Water Meter Installation Project, City Project W32. This is Phase One. Summary, the 2024 Water Meter Installation Project, City Project W32, Phase One, is for water meter installations at all city government buildings, city parks, and landscape median park strips in public right-of-way. Funds are programmed in the fiscal year 2425 capital project budget using water enterprise funds. There is no fiscal impact to the city's general fund for this project. Project includes the installation of water meters at city government buildings. There's nine locations. City parks, there's 19 meter locations. Many of the parks have multiple meters. And landscape median park strips at 157 locations throughout the city. All locations are city-owned property or in public right-of-way. This project is a continuation of the effort to meter all water service connections as required by the California Water Code, Section 527. Phase Two of this, is, Phase Two project is anticipated to complete all required meter installations within the city, and that'll bring us up to 100%. Project bidding. Through the city's website, bidding portal, Planet Bids, a solicitation for construction bids was advertised in the 2024 Water Meter Project W32, Phase One, on September 3, 2024. The advertisement for bids was duly noticed in the Madera Tribune in the following two editions. Four bids were received on October 8, 2024. Now, here's a summary of the bids. West Valley Construction was the lowest bidder, and they were below the engineer's estimate. And the other bids were spread out there. Summary, West Valley Construction Company Incorporated submitted the lowest bid of $1,144,950. West Valley Construction met all the bidder documentation requirements and was selected as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. We recommend a typical allowance of 10% of the contract amount for contingencies resulting from unknown conditions. Project is funded with water enterprise funds. Budget's on the next slide. The contract is $1,144,950, contingencies of 10%. Engineering inspection testing brings a total cost of $1,373,940. The available water enterprise fund is $1,568,813. Our recommendation, test recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the contract award for the 2024 Water Meter Project, City Project Number 32, Phase One, in the amount of $1,144,950 to West Valley Construction Incorporated and a contingency of 10% of the contract amount. Thank you very much. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak under Item D1? Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will close public comment on Item D1. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve Item D1 is written?
Second. Motion to approve Item D1 by Councilwoman Evans, second by Councilmember Villegas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you.
We will now move on to Item D2, Lease Agreement for Facilities at the Millview Community Center with Community Action Partnership of Madera County. Joseph?
All right, Item D2.
Joe Abear, Parks Director, presenting this item, which is the lease agreement for facilities at the Millview Community Center. This is an agreement with Community Action Partnership of Madera County, Inc. Just a summary, the city has maintained a written lease agreement with CAPMC for over 28 years for the use of the building at the Millview Community Center. CAPMC uses that building to house a Head Start program, which provides preschool for Madera's young children. You can see this is where the facility is at. Right next to it, we have another lease to MUSD. They first entered into this agreement with the city in 1995. Several amendments and an updated consolidated agreement in 2016 followed the 1995 agreement. The most least, the most recent lease agreement was executed in May 2021. It was set for three years through May 2024. The base rent was set at 500 per month. On May 15, you all approved Amendment Number One to the existing agreement and extended through August 15, 2024 with Council Resolution Number 24-64. We did another amendment on August 7, the same year, which was Amendment Number Two, and that extended the agreement through November 13. That was with Council Resolution 24-118. The following key terms are being changed or revised in this new agreement, and the agreement is before a term of 36 months through May 31, 2027. Additionally, what's changed in this, we're going to work closely with CAPMC in order to try to find secure funding to resurface the parking and driveway surfaces adjacent to the premises. So as you know, we're looking to actually redo the whole parking lot there at Millview Park and then also in front of the MUSD facility. We've got some more discussions with them on that subject, but that's our plan. And so actually, they've been a good partner, and they've actually, we, CAPMC has really worked with us on this. So I think, I'm confident we're going to be able to get something done on this. You can see what the current lease is. It's 500 a month or 6,000 a year. Through 2025, it'll be the same. It will change in 2025 and 2026 to $767.92 for a total of $9,215.04 a year. The next year, it'll go up to $863.91, which will bring the total to $10,366 and change total for the year. Our recommendation is that you adopt a resolution approving the lease agreement for the facilities with CAPMC through May 31, 2027. And actually, this was probably one of the, I think, sometimes you have negotiations and you feel good when you walk away, and sometimes you don't. This is one of the ones where we actually kind of felt good. We feel like we're partnering with a strategic partner in the community. So that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Joseph. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? On Item D2? Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments regarding Item D2?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for questions and/or a motion. Councilmember Montes.
Yes, I just didn't want to disclose that I'm the city-appointed board member for CAPMC. So we do have a seat at the table for their board, one of, I believe, 10 or 12. But I do appreciate staff doing the negotiations with them. I know there was, there were some questions, but, you know, to the point that Joe, our director, pointed out, it's a strategic partnership. They do a lot of good in the community. It doesn't take away from our costs going up. We do maintenance at the facility. We want to continue to have that, that good relationship and the good partnership. We want to continue to provide services. Head start, something very crucial for, especially the populations that they serve. So thank you, the staff. We can continue to, you know, assist them. And, you know, for those, looks like there were some good negotiations. But I really do appreciate all the work that you guys put into that.
Need further discussion?
I'll move to approve Item D2.
I second.
Motion to approve Item D2 by Councilmember Montes, second by Councilwoman Mejia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. We will now move on to Item D3, Award of Soul Source Contract for Repair and Replacement of Arson-Damaged Equipment at Tadilla's Strand Playground at Centennial Park.
My name is Fernando Castillo. I'm the project manager for Parks and Recreation. I'm here to present Item D3, Resolution Approving a Soul Source Construction Agreement for the procurement of replacement of arson-damaged equipment at Tadilla's Strand Playground at Centennial Park. Summary. The Tadilla's Strand Playground was damaged by arson on April 2024, causing extensive destruction to a significant portion of the structural elements of this facility. The affected playground is The affected playground is outfitted with Play World Equipment, a brand recognized for its functionality, durability, safety, and innovative design. You can see the picture there of the state that the playground was in before the arson incident. Summary, the agreement in this report includes the following items: procurement of specialized playground equipment parts, demolition and removal of existing damaged equipment, and installation and construction services. Why a sole source contract? We need a sole source because the playground components are integrated and specifically designed to fit and function with the existing structure, which is of a particular brand, to accomplish compatibility, safety, and visual consistency. The parts have a unique design and technical specifications. There is only one authorized supplier for Play World in the state of California. The city has also filed a claim with its property insurance program to seek reimbursement for the costs associated with repairing the damage. We are expecting to get the most of the costs returned by the insurance. After the incident, this is what this looked like. You can see the the glide slide, the steps on the deck over there. This is the condition for one of our panels, the vertical climber, the deck steps. The play panel, this was a rotating panel, or younger kids. It completely got deteriorated by the by the burning of the playground. Deck joints and structural attachments were extensively damaged throughout. Deck joints and structural attachments, you see the condition therein. Some of the rubber mulch was also burnt, so we'll need to replace it to make it be safe again. You see the shifting sands panel over there, and right behind in this part, the panel I previously discussed about. The financial impact for this project is the cost to replace the damaged equipment will be paid from the city's property damage expensing in the Insurance Reserve Fund, established as part of fiscal year twenty four, twenty five operating budget, to ensure damaged public facilities are repaired as expeditionally as possible. So this fund was specifically prepared for this type of thing, and there are enough funds for this. This is our cost table. For the equipment itself, manufacturer's cost is eighty one thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars with thirty one cents. For the construction and installation services, demolition and installation services, the cost is one hundred and thirty six thousand, five hundred and fifty five with eighty four cents. The price you see you see there with the eighty one thousand was updated. We received today an inclusion of bonds that we didn't have before in the staff report that you'll see, but it's a minor a minor change of about one percent of what the original cost was. And our recommendations are to adopt a resolution approving a sole source construction agreement with Dave Bang Associates for the procurement of replacement parts, demolition and installation of equipment damaged by the cost of two hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty six dollars and fifteen cents. And also to adopt a resolution authorizing a class one and class two replacement or reconstruction exemption for the California Environmental Quality Act. And that's not going to be necessary, basically, because this is just a reconstruction that's not going to have any additional functions to it, right? So we're not going to need an environmental impact. And those are our recommendations.
Thank you very much, Fernando. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on item D three? Yes, sir.
I my bad, I forgot to introduce Fernando formally to the council. Fernando's been with us for about six months. He's jumped right in, hit the ground running, so he's a good addition to the team, so I just want to make sure you all know who he is. He's just not some guy who we just. And I think also should be you should know that Fernando just recently became a United States citizen, so.
Very nice. Congratulations. Very good, Fernando. Much gracias. Where were we? Let me see, public comment? Was it under public comment?
Yes.
Yeah. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak either about written or Zoom communications, Alicia?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll close public comment, bring it back to my colleagues for questions and our motion on item D three.
We have to approve item D three, one and two.
There's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. And thank you again, Fernando, for presenting. So I have a question. I don't know if this relates to you, or maybe Director Abear may be your answer, but I know that when the city celebrated the opening of Centennial Park, that was a very costly park. And now, moving forward with two hundred and some thousand dollars of repairs, my question is, what are we doing to be proactive so that we we don't have this occur not only at Centennial Park, but in different parks? Do we have any any cameras, lights, sensors, or any type of surveillance that'll help us deter any of this vandalism that takes place? And I understand, I mean, maybe the insurance pays for us, but nevertheless, it's still an excessive amount of of cost that someone has to pay, and I think we can be proactive in putting up some type of surveillance, or at least signs that the property is being surveilled by by the city. So is there anything in place now?
Yeah, that's that's a good question, but if you remember the budget that you all just approved, I think there was some money in there for cameras. I don't know where the cameras are going to go specifically. I think PD is kind of helping us figure out what where that's going to happen, but I believe there was a big chunk of change in there for that. So that's kind of our our plan to move forward. This is actually covered by insurance, as it'll be insurance claim. But yeah, I think it's important to mitigate vandalism, things we see a lot of that in our city and at all of our parks, not just Centennial. So the the real cost is not in the cameras, but it's in the data storage. So I know that we've had a lot of talks about that with PD, we talked to IT about it, and I know there was some funding in this last budget for that, but that's probably not enough to cover everything that we need. So I would imagine on the next go around, we'll be looking at that again.
Yeah, and I know it's it's hard for us to try to get every single park, but I will tell you from firsthand experience, when I walked through Centennial Park to get to the gym, it's very dark on the left side, and I don't know if maybe just some censored lights, you know, it just lights up the place, hey, you're committing a crime, here's a light that just shined on you, and there's a camera there. You know, I don't think it would be, it would really dent the the city's budget to add these proactive measures so that we're not having to replace these occasionally, because if memory serves me right, this was an arsonist that not only did it here, but elsewhere. Am I correct? So I think there may be some other person in the future wanting to consider that, or at least we have the the mechanisms to deter that.
Oh, yeah. No, that's a great suggestion. I think we're looking at some of the dark spaces in our parks. Actually, it's funny, it's a good, you must be my setup person, because we just had this discussion yesterday about looking at replacing some of the lights in some of our parks, because the lights aren't bright enough. So I think that's one of the things we have ongoing that we're taking an investigation just, I mean, in the immediate future, is trying to see where our lights are not bright enough and making them brighter, but I think sensor activated lights, and that's a great idea.
Thank you again, Director Abear, and thank you again, Fernando, for the presentation.
Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you. So when I had initially inquired about it back on May twenty ninth, I had received a timeline of it being completed twenty to twenty two weeks, which would have been about this about this period. I'm just wondering what caused the delays.
Yes, some of the delays were because I didn't understand the processes that the city has, and I got I got I ran into a couple of brick walls there with the processes and understanding steps that I didn't know about before.
Oh, okay. When would we expect it to be open to the public?
I would say sometime around February next year.
Okay. Okay, that's great. Can the insurance fund also be used to repair previously damaged items that before this arsonist attack? I know that there were broken pieces, like in in the musical part of the playground. Can that also be part of the claim?
No, that wasn't this this claim, so.
Oh, okay. But but that fund can it can it be used to repair that kind of damage as well?
We're I we're looking to to repair everything that's been been damaged, so our goal is to put the the park back to the way it was. So we'll find whatever insurance we will.
Yes, we brought the expert to take a look at into everything that was damaged there. So if there was any additional damages in another area, he should have, he must have taken care of those too. But this is was basically about the arson. But the fund can be used for it. It's just a separate issue.
Okay.
Yes.
So like somebody from the public, would they just use the the form online? Would they contact you if they saw that damage? And I'm just saying, because I've seen it specifically, so I want to know who to send it to or what to do.
Yeah, the fund we're discussing here about is 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 can be used for any for any repairs throughout our city parks.
Okay.
Basically, we just need their approval.
All right. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Through the mayor? If there are no further comments, can I get a clarification?
Sure.
So I see that we have in our staff report a certain dollar amount, and then we also have a dollar amount that's been presented to the council tonight. Could we get a clarification of what dollar amount is being sought from the council for approval?
The one in the presentation, the two eighteen.
The one in the presentation, we're going to have to add the bond cost to to the agreement so that so that the council members have that that amount.
And I can't take credit for this, as a sharp eyed person who caught this for me, it's just making me look good, but would you mind putting that back up on the screen so when the council makes up some motion, it would be subject to the new dollar amounts that are identified by staff?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
So instead of the two fifteen, is it two eighteen?
Correct. Can we bring up the, I think he was referring to the the chart, table one?
So if that's the case, I'll move to approve item D three, accepting the the approval of two hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty six with fifteen cents. Motion to approve item D three by Councilmember Rodriguez, seconded by Mayor Potem Gallegos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you. Much gracias. Item D four, contract award for janitorial services to One Main Janitorial, Inc. I believe Mr. Hernandez, do we have him presenting this, Alicia?
It's.
Yes.
I'm just putting this out really quickly here.
Welcome, Ismael.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The item tonight is to award a contract for janitorial services to One Main Janitorial. In twenty seventeen, the city entered into a contract with Service Master for three years with four possible one year extension options. The contract is currently on a month to month, while we've been trying to put this particular contract together. Earlier this year, we published a request for proposals. In total, three hundred and fifty three vendors were notified by the the upload to Planet Bids, and also some vendors that we sent a direct invitation to. Seventeen bidders attended a walkthrough of our facilities, which was a requirement to for for a bid. After the walkthrough, we received ten responsive bids. These were evaluated based on criteria published in the RFP, such as qualifications and experience, completeness of response, proposed work plan, references, and overall cost. The facilities that would receive janitorial services are listed here in the chart and also in the staff report. Most city facilities will receive Monday through Friday daily service. The airport and wastewater treatment plant will receive service two days per work week. After publishing the RFP and receiving bids, we were notified by our police department that they they are requesting an additional day of of service at their facility, so we will be bringing back an amendment to you to include that additional day. Our police officers work seven days a week, and somehow that that got missed during the RFP process. The responsive bidders are listed here with their top scores on the next page. One Main Janitorial received a score of two thirty one. CCS Facility Services received a score of two twenty six. Quality Cleaning Professionals received a score of two ten. One Main Janitorial, in addition to having the highest score, provided the lowest bid. They are also a local company, so they're right here in Madera, which is an additional benefit. The expenses for this contract are allocated across various departments and accounts in the general fund and also the enterprise funds. And for example, here, many departments are funded by the general fund, while services at the Public Works Corporation Yard and Wastewater Treatment Plant are funded through enterprise funds, so those funds would pay for their portion of of the contract. This proposed vendor's average monthly cost for base services turned out to be twelve percent lower than that of our current vendor, so we're receiving a pretty decent discount. Their monthly fee is twenty three thousand, two hundred and fifty seven dollars with a seven percent annual price increase. And yeah, we're we're pretty happy about this cost savings. So the recommendation for is for council to adopt a resolution awarding a contract for janitorial services to One Main Janitorial Incorporated. Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ismael. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on item D four? Alicia, do we have any written or Zoom comments on this item?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will now close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for discussion and or a motion.
I saw move to approve D four as presented.
Motion by Mayor Potem Gallegos, seconded by Councilmember Montes, to approve item D four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much for that presentation. We will move on to item E. There are no administrator reports tonight. We'll go on to future agenda items under item F. Excuse me, this portion of the meeting is reserved to initiate new matters and to request updates and to initiate new agenda items. No single item may exceed one minute. All votes shall be concluded electronically with the results announced by the chair. If voting is not available by electronic methods, another method may be used by the chair unless otherwise determined by a majority of the council members present. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendaized and which meet other requirements for action. Do we have any suggested agenda items for the future? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you. Before us, public comment had brought about the the possibility of a splash pad, and I had to kind of look that up when they first asked me what that was, but I just wanted to see if that's something that's feasible for us at Town and Country, maybe our our parks. Maybe our our parks director can enlighten us with some information. Thank you again for sending that to me yesterday. I really opened some questions regarding Rotary Park. I know we had one there, but I'd like to see at least a discussion to see if that's even feasible. And what the what what would be some of the some of the challenges we'd face if we have that? And what, I mean, that's kind of what the discussion would would evolve around her. So I I'd like to see if we can bring that to the council.
So far, regarding your requests, I have yourself, Councilwoman Mejia, Councilmember Montes, Gallegos, Councilmember Evans. I don't see anything from Mr. Viega. I I do see now, so it's unanimous. So we'll we'll put that on our future agenda.
I I do have one other request, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So I know that, you know, with with code enforcement and other public works, I I'd like to know what our our staffing is regarding the capacity. Do we have capacity to be able to take care of most of the violations that we're citing? Are we behind on any of that? And kind of, you know, I just want to know if we have enough code enforcement handling the 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 municipal code and violations that we that we have here in our city. I don't know what team is made up now. I don't know if it's a team of four, a team of five for the size of our city. Do we have, is that sufficient? So I'd like to bring that up. And also during the 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 pressure leaks that we had with the tower, I know that we had some water leaks. And prior to that, years back, I know we had some water leaks down Main Berry as well. And I know that those took some time to get that, get to those repairs. Do we have sufficient staff at public works, especially within those departments, to be able to address the the issues on a timely manner that are not costing our 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 city money? So I'm not sure if you guys would entertain that, but I'd like to bring that back just to see where we're at with capacity.
Would that be a simple report that you could prepare, Arnaldo, or should we?
If the council were to like a report, we can most definitely provide it. I can tell you with confidence that we probably do not have enough staff at the city, and it comes down to an issue, and that's resources. While I would love to stand before council and the community and say we have an abundance of resources and we can provide excellent service on the spot, unfortunately, that's not the case necessarily. And but we can definitely come back to council and provide any amount of details that you would like. It's a little more challenging sometimes with enterprise departments, because that has a direct impact on the water rates and the sewer rates. And so what we attempt to do is at staff, we try to balance the community's rates, their sewer and water bills, because there's a lot of frustration when those are adjusted, but those pay our city staff and that dictates how many staff we have. With that being said, though, we can most definitely put that together. I think I think it would be a good and healthy discussion. I I but as a city manager, you're always looking for more resources. So I would love to add more staff at the city and more resources, but that's sometimes can be a challenge. So again, it's up to the council. If the council instructs us to put that in together, we'll put it together as best as we can to have a healthy discussion and to provide as much information that the council would like.
So and before we get into further discussion on that, just a quick question there for you, Arnaldo. That that portion of it within the water and sewer, that may be something that may be added to our future rate study. If you feel that that is a better time, then that's fine. We can bring it at that time. Just wanted to make sure, do we have the adequate staff to be able to provide the services needed when 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 needed? That that and and if that's something we can bring back in our report, that's fine. If that's something you feel that is being brought already or worked on with the future rate study, then then we can wait for that as well.
I think that we can provide an informational item that maybe council can digest. And then if council desires additional information, and then you can just direct staff. I do think it's it's sound information to have. And I and I think it'd be beneficial for the community to understand some of the challenges we have and and the amount of resources we have and at the same time that we don't have. So I do think that that would be a worthwhile staff report, so council can digest it.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's my request. So I know there was two of them. I'm not sure if you guys were in implying to wanting to see both of those with code enforcement and or public works.
You have, we have five votes, including myself, six. So we'll get the Councilwoman Evans, Mayor Potem, Montes, Mejia, Rodriguez, and myself. So so both of them, one informational, that will be provided by Arnaldo. And then the other one is to agendize the question regarding staffing of of code enforcement. Correct? Okay. Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you. First, I'd like to start off by saying that I really appreciate the efforts of the city of maintaining the lot that's empty on the corner of Yosemite and East Street. It's been clean, it's been well kept for the last couple of months. I think that we can do more as a city as far as cleaning up and replacing the banners in downtown. So I'd like to request to see what can be done of of doing more cleanup downtown, but also of decorating for Christmas, like through Christmas lights or things like that. Can that be brought back? Especially ahead of this candlelight parade that's happening in a few weeks.
The Christmas parade?
Yeah.
We have, the A's are Councilwoman Evans, Mayor Potem, Councilmember Montes, Mejia, Rodriguez, Gallegos. It's all of us are voting in favor. Any more requests for agendaized items?
You got mine?
Yes, I got yours. Yes, thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Communications Reports and Announcements. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and the council members to make brief reports on boards, committees, and other public agencies and at public events, and to make announcements. Council, Mayor Potem Gallegos.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I just wanted to shout out to Madera PD Sheriff and the probation for doing our national night out today at Courthouse Park and all the planning that went into it. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
And that event runs till three, I mean, eight? No, not three.
It's over then.
Eight? Okay. All right. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. I just want to report out that during the week of October fifteenth, I believe you guys attended the League of Cities in Long Beach. I unfortunately could not attend. My birthday was that Friday and I had other plans set aside. But anyways, I did get a chance to attend the Calafco, which is, again, the appointment here put me on the LaFco, which is the Local Agency Formation Commission. And this is out of fifty-eight counties that participate. But it was a really very informative, informational regarding what LaFco is all about. Obviously, it's it's about formatting agencies, but more importantly, discouraging urban sprawl. I think, Arnaldo, you would appreciate that, because that kind of fits into your wheelhouse. Really, really good information as far as when it comes to annexations for your influence, community of districts and what have you. Just know that you do have someone that's very attentive to to what LaFco does. And I hope to to move that agency forward in helping any future annexations and or requests for municipal service requests. I hope you guys had the same amount of information bring back. I know you guys had a great, quite, quite the trip. I also wanted to just congratulate our public director, Ishmael Hernandez. I think we we got some information. I congratulate you on your new endeavor. Wish you well and thank you again for serving the city of Madera. And that's all I have. A happy Halloween to all and Feliz Dia de Muertos to all.
Councilmember Montes.
I just want to say thank you to staff for everything that you do for the community event going on right now. Hopefully, we can catch the last part of it. Our attendance at the League of Cities, I was unable, I had some family emergency stuff that I had to get to before that. But the sessions that I had to get to is very informative. I think one of these days we need to do, maybe bring it back like a train-the-trainer thing and, you know, some of the things that because we all, I believe everybody that attended attended different sessions. And so just, you know, what we thought was pertinent. Also, like to thank Ishmael for serving this community and wish him nothing but the best in his future endeavors. And hopefully, everybody also has a good Halloween and Dia de los Muertos.
Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you to the city chief and everyone that's over there now, and we will be over there very shortly. I ask blessings for each and every one of you as we travel there. And as the children are out and about during this, in the streets, I ask that everyone be cautious of them, because they rip and run back and forth across the streets. So I'm asking for everyone to be cautious of that. League of Cities, there was quite a bit for us to digest, and it was very informational. Also, last weekend, I, or just this past weekend, I went to Los Angeles to the NAACP Conference, the California Hawaii Conference, and Maxine Waters was there. So that was that was a big treat. But there are some things that are going to be coming down the pike as far as resolutions coming from the NAACP to the state of California. To Ishmael, congratulations on your your new position. We're going to miss you here, but Godspeed as you go and everyone be safe tonight. And hallelujah, November the fifth is Tuesday, and we will be finished. And God bless each and every one of you, and I pass the baton back, sir.
Councilwoman Mejia.
Thank you, Ishmael. As I said earlier, congratulations to District Five. And I thank you so much for your professionalism, your efficiency, and we wish you well in your new endeavor. On October thirteenth, we had the Second Annual Gelaguetza here in Madera. It was quite a success. There was a lot of people that turned out. It was great to see so many hands on deck helping put this event together and making it successful. On behalf of Comité Gelaguetza Madera, I'd like to thank our community and all of the service clubs that also joined to help. It it truly truly was community-led, and I think that that's what made it so successful and and everybody got to enjoy. This Friday, there's gonna be Dia de Muertos. It's gonna be part of the new Uñavi series that it takes place at Courthouse Park. It's from twelve PM to eight PM. So if you really want to see an authentic Dia de Muertos celebrated in the community, I would invite you all to participate at Courthouse Park. And I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Councilmember Viegas.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I attend all those, as many as I can, workshops in the League of Cities. I went to the Board and Delegates Assembly. There was only one item to be approved. So everything passed in the voting process, so and and that's pretty good. So I just want to say to Ishmael Hernandez, thank you for working and and directing the city for all this time and farewell to you with your new job. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. We were able to, just prior to the League of Cities in Long Beach, we were able to attend the King Hussein groundbreaking for the for the let me get, I was trying to find something. I guess I didn't find it. No, music, music is not included. I was trying to find another Dia de los Muertos event happening on Saturday, but I'm not gonna look for it now. Anyway, so we went to the King Hussein groundbreaking ceremony for a brand-new elementary school being built here in Madera. Congratulations to King Hussein and Madera Unified School District for that. I was able to attend Cesar Chavez Elementary School and participated in a reading of a children's book to a kindergarten class at Cesar Chavez Elementary. That was, it's always enjoyable when you go and you go to a classroom and you meet with the teachers and and you talk to the students. They have all kinds of interesting questions. That's one of the highlights of my thing about being the mayor. Also, the this past week, I attended a vigil for victims of domestic violence at Saint John Combs Catholic Church. We had a candlelight vigil there, and we presented a certificate from the City of Madera City Council in support of all the efforts that they're doing to educate the public regarding domestic violence. But all in all, it's a very busy month, and I want to thank you all for being here. Ishmael, I have a request. Are we gonna be able to fix that drinking fountain before you leave? That's a joke, brother. It's a joke. Congratulations on your on your new employment. Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done for your community. There was a lot of good work that you have done. Thank you very much for that, and we wish you Godspeed and and thank you for your service. This concludes our meeting. We have no closed session tonight. We, our next city council member meeting dates are gonna be November twentieth and December the fourth. This meeting is now adjourned. It is now seven oh three PM. Thank you for coming tonight and have a good, safe evening. Thank you.